Five.
Yes, please.
All right. So I would like to open this meeting at two forty-eight. Select board work session for budgets on December twenty-ninth. All right.
Where do you want to start?
As a top.
At the beginning?
Yeah, you might as well just take us through it.
Why don't we start with the operating budget?
Okay.
There are a few changes since we last talked about the operating budget. And I'll point them out as we go.
Okay.
All right, so here we are in the executive lines. Actually, yes, okay. I don't know, I don't really have any changes since we talked last time. Any questions within this budget? It is from twenty, from twenty-one, it's down about five thousand dollars.
So it's down?
Yeah.
Okay, so yes on that.
Forty-seven.
The, with the printing, I remember I asked this, but I don't remember the answer. Printing, we spent more, why are we reducing that further? Are there those one-time printing expenses or?
I think that we had, we had put the tax maps in the wrong line. And I had looked this up and now I'm kind of blanking on what the answer was. But we're down four hundred.
And so that is not something we're going to need.
What's that?
And so that's not something we need since we were.
I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's really that important.
Okay.
To worry about that. And you'll notice my line is down, that's because of reapportion, the other part of where my money comes from, from the welfare, which I'll talk to you when I get there. Well, it's up from last year, but. No, it's up from last year, okay.
Yeah.
I'm looking at the wrong way.
So the pretty, the two major things are the supplies.
The print, yeah, the printing supplies, but I don't think, we are a little overgrown on one of them. And I think we had two years of maps in one, in one line, that's what kind of happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the contracted technology services and software subscriptions, do we have those broken out appropriately with, for example, the Office three sixty-five and expected higher cost of that this coming year?
I had CopyCheck send me a figure of what it was going to be.
Okay.
And so I built these, this figure based on what they sent me.
Okay, perfect.
So what do we do, say?
So I'm, you know, I just.
Tell me what happens once we look at this and we say.
So I guess it's, it's questions, and then if we want to change anything, then talk about it. Or we can, and then we can say we approve the budget or not, or we can say sections if you want to. We could say that we approved the executive section as is.
You mean this, yeah, I, I think, I think as we go, can we do that as we go along?
I think for today, it might be easier if we go, especially with these budgets, ask questions as we go.
Right.
And if you have any objections and want to change them, here's the time to do it. You don't have to really accept the budget today, I was thinking you would do that at a regular meeting.
But we're gonna get, this is like, in a sense, what you call work sessions. We're gonna get through this, so we're gonna say, okay, we all, we all agree.
So here's, this is the opportunity to say. Yes, I'm fine with it, or no, I'm not fine with it.
Okay.
And at the department meeting next week, that's when we would say, we're gonna approve this as is, or make these changes, or talk to the preference about changes, et cetera.
Kind of half, I guess, okay.
The recording secretary listing that's there, do we still need to keep that?
No, we should take that out now that it's, yeah.
Because I know that was rolled into his position, which is why it was always zero.
Yeah, that's been, I think we, we kept it for the historical, but now we don't need that, so.
Okay.
I will remove that.
Dave does not like something that says divide by zero.
That's generally.
I thought this board liked zero budgets.
Well, we do, but, 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 you know, it's, those little weird symbols under the zero, how's that?
We can take that out.
All right, so that moves us to the next one.
Okay, there are some changes in elections.
That's scary.
If you notice, the deputy clerk wages.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, me and, me and Dave wanna be on the same, even though it's up there.
Should be the next page.
Yeah.
All of these should be the next as you flip through.
Milo, I have, I have updates here if you want that.
One, one question I have, are we okay in these as we go now, or are we gonna go through all of them first?
We should ask our questions and then generically kind of okay them as, as we move through. And or say that we're gonna, we want to look at it more.
All right, so basically, are we, so we're talking about the executive is basically okay the way it is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so that's okay.
You don't think so?
No, 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 I just want to know because we didn't say anything about, we just, you know, put it up here.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of looking for, is for you to say, okay, and, and this isn't your last hurrah either.
All right, we can change it.
But it's a chance to say, for example, this one, you're going to say, Dana, why is the deputy clerk wages increased so much? And I have a note from the town, from the town clerk, wanting to increase the, well, Judy Jones is, is leaving as, as deputy, and Michelle has someone in mind.
Oh, really, she's leaving also?
Yeah, yeah. And so Michelle wants to bring someone else in, and she wants to allow them more hours.
Yeah, we talked about that.
So I think you talked a little bit about it, and. So she's got, please update the deputy assistant clerk wages line for the twenty twenty-two budget to ten thousand four fifty, to increase the weekly hours to ten, essentially doubling the time, obviously they're five now. And then she's multiplied out ten hours, fifty weeks, plus ten hours, seven days, five hundred fifty hours total.
And. I'll just have a strange question. We're gonna get a new deputy clerk, does this person have, so we're starting a new one at the same pay rate that the old one was, but does this new person have any experience, or is it like?
Again, how that works, it's similar to like the treasure. The clerk will decide who she wants, and then the board will appoint. And I, I think that, I'm not sure whether this person has experience as a town clerk, I would suspect not. They have to be a resident, but I do know that the person she's thinking about does have a business background.
Oh, okay.
So there's still a learning curve.
Yeah.
You know? I guess what, what I've encouraged Michelle, and, and I think she's on board with it, is that we need someone who can really step in when she's gone. And Judy can to some extent, but she's never had with five hours, and she usually works four hours Monday night. And, and there's not much time for training, because that's when people are here. So.
Okay. Just don't understand.
That's why, and I'm not sure whether she's really got a soft, she's got a candidate, but I'm not sure whether it's worked out yet.
But more or less, she's got no backup to it at all.
You know, if Michelle were out sick, or, or, you know, we'd be in a little bit of a conundrum.
Yep. Oh, we had that when our former town clerk, Barbara Hockman, she got sick, she was only sick a couple of weeks. I mean, she was sick, but we didn't know it.
It went very fast, and Michelle was telling.
Exactly, she was a wonderful person.
And Michelle had just come on as a deputy clerk, and suddenly she was the clerk.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and you're, like, the girl was fifty-five years old or something, you don't think of anything, you know?
No, that's too bad.
I know.
The town clerk stipend, again, that's the, the town clerk has picked her stipend.
How many, how many hours does she do town clerk stuff, do we know? Is that an okay question?
Well, she's open eight hours on Monday and eight hours on Wednesday, so that's sixteen. And last Friday is four, so.
Sixty-four and four, sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight hours a month, yeah. I mean, it would be.
Obviously, she does other time as well, but we're only, and I remember this was, was a big thing, we are not allowed to say anything other than what the open hours must be. We can't say how many hours she can or must work. But eight sixteen.
You control the money.
The number of hours. So again, that's open hours.
And this is, this, this, this budget amount is with all her?
That's from her presentation.
Well, meaning, meaning it includes any of her, you know, like, because does she get health insurance or something like that?
She.
Those things are not included in this.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, this doesn't include that.
Okay.
So if we account only for open hours, which of course is not accurate, but if it's only open hours using those numbers, it's forty-six dollars eighty-seven cents per hour. It is also important to note that this, when she's acting as other things, for example, in elections, that is an additional amount, that's not from the town clerk stipend.
Oh, it, that, it would be above and beyond this thirty-eight?
Correct. So in election wages, there, there's multiples, I'm pretty sure that TC is because it's for town clerk, but maybe I'm wrong there.
No, I think you're right.
Yes.
But I know that she gets election, wages for election, just like the supervisors and other elections folks, and so on due.
Yeah, those election wages that come from Michelle and Sarah Charles, based on the number of elections they have.
Yeah, and they, they generally put in the same, like, three percent whatever raise at an hourly amount, and then the number of hours they expect based on the number and kind of elections that we have. So last election cycle wasn't really exciting in town. The next one, of course, will be midterm elections for, for the nation, so it'll be more involved.
But she gets paid separately for that anyways?
Correct.
So that's not really.
Yeah, well, that's why, for example, the election wages and the supervisors are gonna be up.
Okay.
Is because of the, the kind of election.
How many do we have in a year? Right, that's one of the other.
It depends, yeah.
Yeah.
It depends, so I mean, next year, it's twenty-two, so there'll probably be three with the town and the primary for the state and the, and the general election.
Yeah.
The, the common thing, which I think we're gonna find in several portions here, so I'm not picking on the town clerk.
Okay, good.
But the, the thing that we're gonna find in several locations here is that the people who are receiving the stipend are requesting changes in that stipend amount. And we don't currently have a set method or policy on how we adjust either those stipends or ours or anybody else's. Several of the stipends, for example, the fire department has never changed in a very long time, and probably shouldn't unless it's because there's more members, so we should be increasing it based on the number of members. But those are figures that I, I don't happen to have, and that changes a bit based on number of calls and stuff. But you're, from court cases, you're not allowed to treat a stipend as pay for the job. But of course, that's a little different because of the way that things were changed for the town court via warrant article, which said, we're gonna take all of the things that you were making, and we're gonna give it back to you as, this is the amount that you were normally making, and that's basically what the stipend's gonna be. The theory was that over time, that would save the town money because the stipend was going to be lower and then the growth of the fees that were being taken in by the office, as was presented at the town meeting. I was just starting to show up at that point, so I wasn't part of doing those decisions, but.
It is more common practice now that most town clerks do not get fees like back in the day.
Right, fees meaning they make a percentage one day.
They would get the municipal, the town clerk fee when you register your car, and that would be theirs, that's.
So they don't get that anymore?
They get it, but it goes to the town.
Oh, okay, so they're not getting it, they collect it, but it's not in there.
They're collecting it, but they're not, yeah.
So our town clerk got that until this warrant article passed.
Okay, so that makes it.
The town is going to collect it all instead and give you the stipend. A theory that was going to work out better for the town over time. I haven't found those numbers, I don't know how to read those numbers, because I don't have.
And I am hoping to get better stipend numbers, but one thing that has bothered me since I've been here, and I, I sound terrible, but people getting the stipend have been the ones that are told what they're gonna want to get for stipend.
Wait, say that again?
Not, of, people who have, people have always put in their budget what the stipend is and expect that's what they're going to be paid, rather than, in my experience, the select board decides what, what the money is. Not, I'm just pointing that out.
So I, I would simply say that I find no particular issue with this section other than I think we should review and come up with some way to handle stipends as either a policy or a formula for the future, and maybe apply that to whatever we're going to do with the budget this year.
And I would encourage you on Monday to talk to Michelle about the deputy clerk line.
I, yeah, I mean, that.
Because the budget's up eighty-five hundred, you see most of it, fifty-four hundred is the, that line.
Right, the one thing that's, how do I say this, the thing that it would create as long as, you know, like anything, if somebody comes in and helps, it should relieve her a little bit. A, relieve her a little bit, but also B, cover the town's.
Well, I think that's the, the goal is really to have the, it's about the town being covered.
Which I agree with, it's just, yeah, okay, so. We're, we're just, we're spending quite a bit, which is necessary and needed to, to have a backup. So I, I didn't, you know.
And of course, the town clerk department is one of our biggest revenue sources.
The what is?
Biggest revenue source with motivating registrations and things like that, so. And it's very, it's a very exact job, I mean, you.
Well, there's a lot to know.
You have to know what you're doing and, and be on your toes.
Motor vehicle permit fees, or licenses, you know, that's not, we've always gotten that, but. So municipal agent fees, I, I, I think that would be one that she would have gotten, but it's, there ha, uh.
She would have gotten the municipal agent.
There are several fees in here that she would have gotten.
Yeah.
So like, it's hard to look at a line and say, you know, that's kind of equal. Because there's lots of different fees, lots of partial things that, that she would have gotten before. Yeah, it was just scrolled all the way over to. All right.
Ready for the next?
Any other questions or comments?
So we're gonna discuss that with Michelle.
Yeah, I think so. Well, so we could, we should discuss the deputy clerk wages with her. She already presented about that and said she wanted to do it in support of the idea. There, for a doubling of hours, that's more than a doubling of pay, so it looks like there's a pay raise added in there.
And I kind of think if it's a new deputy, she's gonna be learning on the job, so we shouldn't be paying her top dollar.
Yeah, gen, generally, the first on hire is a slightly lower, and then your first, your first review, as long as it's a good one, is usually a fairly large increase.
Yeah.
So.
Well, that makes sense, I mean, if you're learning the job, you're not gonna be as fast as.
Right.
Little in the years.
And so I, I would hope that we would do something similar there, but we'll have to work out the exact figures with her and see what she's thinking, because maybe it was just that it was severely underpaid to begin with, like we found with some of the other positions.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, but that, that's, that's what's hard to even look at these numbers, we don't.
Yeah, we don't really know until we talk to, to our clerks.
What is, what is supervisor, what's that mean?
Uh, they're the supervisors of the checklist, so they're the people for voting that are making sure you're the right person.
One thing I neglected to point out was the overall operating budget shows a decrease of forty-four hundred. That's the overall.
Overall, of all of?
All the operating budgets, the total bottom line is the, it's a decrease of forty-four hundred.
Forty-four hundred, not exactly.
It's not, yeah. Better than increase of forty-one.
Well, I think about that, we were supposed to get like eighty thousand dollars from something, and now it's a hundred and forty.
Can I tell you why?
The room and meals tax.
Have you listened on the radio? They were kicking out today a lot.
Yeah.
It's because the, because the governor, something about the, took something and did something in cash, so we got dou, almost doubled the amount of money. Every town did. And what they thought you were gonna get, because there's something that they did on the state level. You could probably explain it better, but I think I heard it eight times, I go, oh, oh!
Well, I was very surprised to see that, because we're talking eighty, and all of a sudden, it's a hundred and forty.
They told us last year that we were gonna get less. I mean, that's a revenue, so it shows up on your revenue, I mean, basically it offsets taxes. But they told us last year, we got ninety-six last year, and they said, oh, you won't get that this year. This is our representative at DRA, and that's all, that was the most information she had at the time. And I guess a lot of people went out to eat a lot, or other things.
There was something that, that they did amongst the inner.
In the bookkeeping.
Yeah, too, that, that didn't happen the year before or something. And, and, and they put it in as cash, I'm not quite sure, I kind of, but more or less, it, all they keep bragging about is it doubled everybody's towns. You know?
Right.
So it's something on the budget side of, even on the state, that they.
Which we probably should have been getting all these years.
Well, that's what it's, that's what they made it sound like, it was, uh, somebody, somebody caught that, and somebody said, hey, hey, this isn't right, so. But, asked me to explain it, no. I was telling you what the radio said.
I can remember, for years, the government was supposed to pay us, well, masses for the, the dam appeal, we never got any money. And all of a sudden, it's like, oh, they're supposed to pay us, and they are paying us, I hope they're still paying us, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Funny how that can be this, but that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
For a lot of towns, yeah.
That was kind of a nice Christmas present.
But I now, I wonder if that's gonna continue, if they found that, whatever it is that they found, or is this gonna be like a once in a whoopie dooey time?
You know, Dee, I don't know.
It sounded like they corrected an error, or somebody had finagled something and somebody caught it. It sounds like to me that they corrected it, I don't, but.
So they corrected it, we might continue to get it.
But like he says, who knows?
Yeah, right, right, they'll think of another way to get it.
For the one-time correction of we found this.
Well.
Either way.
Yeah, right.
Are, are we good with the elections section for now?
Yeah, for now, yeah.
All right, so let's move on, we obviously want to visit those wages and stipends after.
The next category is the financial administration. And the first line is the salary for the financial administrator. Currently, Wendy makes twenty-eight dollars per hour for a total of fifteen hours a week. She has asked for an increase, and gave me a letter, which I'll have you read, I just got it today, explaining why she feels that she should be working twenty hours a week and be paid thirty-one dollars an hour. I have not figured the budget thinking of thirty-one. That would be thirty-two thousand, thereabouts, if, if that were the case.
So what is the budget figured with at this point?
The one I have now is twenty, twenty-eight, and I'm figuring, I figured twenty-nine per hour.
So is it, so it's twenty-nine per hour at twenty hours, or at fifteen?
Thirty-one, she wants thirty-one at.
But, but what is, what is, which numbers did you use for the current budget?
Fifteen, fifteen hours times twenty.
So still fifteen hours, okay. And.
With maybe a little wiggle room, I mean, just.
So. Obviously, she's going to want to have both more A and more hours. What is your feeling on the number of hours?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, because we wouldn't know.
Because we've, we've certainly had a lot of use for a lot of hours at this point in time, because we've all been kind of correcting and coming back on board and getting things the way that we want them to run. Do you believe we're gonna continue to need, or do you believe we're going to continue to feel like we need more hours going in the coming years, or do you feel like we're getting everything under control?
You know, I think we're getting, I think we're getting caught up in where we need to be. A few more hours a week, I think would be helpful. Twenty hours, I don't, I don't think so, I mean, in my opinion.
And has it been worded with there is fifteen hours in a week, or is it up to fifteen hours a week as requested?
I think when we budgeted last year, that we had based it on fifteen hours. And there are weeks that we go over that when we have, we have things happening, and there are weeks that we go under that.
Okay.
To make up for it.
So it isn't like we definitely owe her fifteen or twenty per week difference?
Well, I, I would say that we, when she was hired, she was promised fifteen. So I think we are committed to the fifteen, and she, we need the fifteen. And there are times when we might need twenty. This year, we are the example, would be, you know, a very busy time, but there are also times when not. I, I like to give people, you know, as you know, what trouble we had finding somebody. And there aren't many people that can do these things, and I probably shouldn't be talking about this in public session, but anyway. That's what I'll speak more on, I think I'd better talk later.
Okay, so based on the number of hours not changing.
And the good news is I'll take that bookkeeper wages out.
Okay, so that.
Audit services from the letter that you signed last week, that's the amount they quoted you, sixteen?
That's good.
Payroll services, these are realistic. The tax collector also sent her a wish for an increase in her stipend. As well as a small one for the deputy.
Yeah, and so the deputy tax collector is another where the current deputy tax collector is also the town clerk. So she, there, there's several positions that affect that. Uh, let's see, association mileage.
Why is office supply so high?
Well, office supply is the same as it was, but it looks like we didn't use it.
All right, we didn't use much of it.
We have, we had like seven hundred dollars left.
Well, it's just thirteen sixty-two, but maybe there have been additional purchases since.
Some of that is the, the supplies for the tax collector. And the envelopes for the bills. They're not inexpensive, they're not twenty-two hundred, but they're not inexpensive as well as the paper that they use there.
I guess the, my question would be, if we are showing that we didn't use even half of the budget that was budgeted, does it need to still be that high?
Probably not.
I would say in like a thousand or twelve hundred.
I don't happen to have my previous one, I don't think.
I'll, I'll run the office supply. I'll, uh, I'll run the office supply line and see what actually was in there to have it for you Monday.
Okay.
And so I better write it down so we can.
Yeah, let's just make sure that's accurate one way or another.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I misspoke. Tax collector supplies is another line.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's just above it.
Yeah.
Which was about right.
Yeah.
Alright. So, do we have any other questions other than we'll have to look at wages and stipends as per usual? Okay.
The next one is revaluation. Um, this budget is based on contract amounts. The, um, CNPs price per year to do the assessing is sixteen thousand. And the utility appraiser is ten thousand eight seventy-five. This year, the CNP did not bill us for the last of twenty twenty until April of twenty-one. Which is why we are in an overdraft position.
Is that, uh, all corrected, so it won't happen again next year?
I hope.
It's hard to force people to bill.
I hope. I think, I mean, I think I've gotten all the bills for them this year.
Okay.
It's amazing that the utility appraiser is that high. We have that many utility things to appraise?
Well, and that is, um, that's a contract that the board entered into. Um, and one of the issues, the former assessors apparently did the utility appraisers. Um, whereas this, these assessors do not do utilities. And it is kind of.
Oh, that's what we have to assess.
Yeah, so it's a, it's an animal under itself. It's the, it's the appraisal for the poles and lines and transmission lines and, and all those things. And one thing about the utility appraiser, he's very familiar with this and has done it a lot, and hopefully will keep us out of court, which we've had some cases in the past.
Or get us the money we're deserving.
You know? And also, that includes, he would defend us if we.
Oh, okay.
If we had a, a payment issue.
Okay. Yeah, and when the, um, before I was on the board and the, uh, current assessors were presented as, uh, the best option because of being overpriced. Uh, it was not presented that they would also need to get a utility appraiser. So, uh, we didn't know that, and then I think it was my first year on the board, we ended up having to get the utility appraiser.
Oh, that was good.
It was last, last April or March when they said, oh.
Last April or March? Okay, so maybe it was my second.
You know, it was like, oh, by the way, we don't do utilities.
How come we switched appraisers to begin with?
Uh.
Uh, the contract had ended and we needed to do the revaluation portion, and so they put them up to bid, and they accepted the lowest offer.
Which didn't include utilities.
Which didn't include all the same things.
That was an atlas for atlas, was it?
Nope.
And it's an interesting, like everything else, I don't know where these people have gone, but, you know, to get an assessor now is.
Hard.
Hard.
And I'm not really, I mean.
I mean, I don't think they're priced as far as them. I, I have no problem with that, but, yeah. Additional ten thousand is hard to take, and, um, and I was hoping we'd get more assessment out of the utilities. I believe that it's right. He's only in our best interest, but I say that every time, but I'm disappointed with.
Of what the number actually came out?
The number of the assessment.
Where do you find that number?
Um, we have it. I could tell it.
Yeah.
What it is.
We report that on the MS one to.
And it's on the MS one, yeah.
Uh, the, and part of, part of that, though, is based on rates of, uh, of course depreciations and stuff of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
But also the percentages they compared to valuations of the town to what the rest of the state.
Okay.
Um, so we have that number and the, the name of it is blanking on me right now.
Equalization.
Equalization. So the equalization affects our utility amounts fairly dramatically because that's where a lot of our valuation is, but not where our equalization ratio comes from. So with us, if we, for example, had a fixed equalization ratio up to a hundred, which was where, you know, we always aimed for it. If we were sitting at that, all of our utilities would be worth a lot more. We'd get a lot more income through that, but as a result, we don't.
Oh, we get to a hundred percent, I'm sure. That's the end of this, that's the end of it. Eventually, we're gonna have to get.
Well, you noticed, I mean, the information I just sent you on the equalization, seventy-three percent we are.
That's pretty low.
And it's, it's because every town's the same situation.
Oh, yeah, because everything's out of sight.
People just, uh, we can't keep up with the sales prices.
Exactly. And it's not gonna last forever.
No, it isn't. No, it isn't.
That's the hardest part, evaluating somebody's home.
Then it will go the other way.
Yes.
Then you'll get a ton of abatements up down that, too.
Absolutely.
You know?
Yes.
Until the bubble bursts.
That's right, and it will.
Yeah.
Alright.
So the next is.
Most come down.
Legal expenses. Um, and as you see, I've spent a lot on legal, but a lot of that was recaptured from these, um, housing things that we had.
And that had also been increased because of concern for a possible need for legal, uh, representation and court cases regarding a specific property. Um, and fortunately, it did not come to that. Um, so we did not have to spend a lot of that. Uh, part of that increase was also for the solar project. Uh, with, and that portion needs to stay there, and I don't know if you've accounted for or considered that in this. In that, once we are working on the MOU for the solar project, we have a reimbursement agreement with the, uh, solar company where they will, will pay our legal fees for going through and talking to our chosen legal counsel about the MOU and the process and, and representing us through that process and to the SEC as required or desired. Uh, however, we need to pay for it before we can be reimbursed, so it needs to be in the budget.
So that's part, so on this proposed budget.
I believe it was six thousand two years ago, so.
I did not put it here.
Okay.
Um, because I, I should've known that it would go through the budget. And it would show as a revenue on the other side, so.
Right.
But I haven't counted for it in revenue either, and I think, you know, we expected it was, things were gonna be happening in twenty-one and.
And they didn't.
But, uh.
But are you, uh, but are you asking for another, I mean, the budget amount with twenty-one was twelve thousand six hundred and.
Well, it went down, I mean, the, the budget went down by three thousand dollars because.
Okay, okay, so, yeah, alright, yeah.
But with the, with the.
I was looking at it.
Realization that the, um, there may be expenses with the solar project. And we said six thousand last year. Is that what you said?
I think it was six thousand two years ago. And it ended up going to twelve thousand because of the expect, expectations of litigation and expecting the MOU process.
Would it make sense to bring that back up to twelve thousand and just add the other back on the revenue side?
I think that would probably make sense. Or do you folks think?
At least it's something good on the other side to offset this side.
Yeah. The good, the good news is even whether it matches what's there or not, uh, much like the, um, much like the road grants, uh, the block grant, and it's always gonna be the same on both sides. So whether it goes up or down is never really changing anything.
But we could overspend this part of the legal expenses budget anyway, right? If you didn't.
As long as you don't overdo the bottom line of the whole budget.
Right, the bro, right, the whole budget. I mean, I kinda like it looking like it's going down three thousand dollars now, and then we're gonna, even though we, then we've got that explanation that we'll be going, I mean, who knows if we're gonna even spend it this coming year, we were thinking, but maybe we're not even gonna spend it this year. I don't know. But we're still gonna get that money back, so I don't know. At first, I think.
Either way, the money's not gonna actually change the tax rate.
Yeah, right. But I like the way it looks now where we're going down in legal fees and, and it'll be offset with, if we do have to spend it this year, maybe we won't even spend it this year. Who the heck knows the way crazy stuff's going? I mean, next in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, and we've got, we've got a fair, I mean, I shouldn't say a fair chunk, but we've, we've got a chunk sitting in the legal expendable trust fund too, in case we actually needed more that was outside of that scope. So for example, if the town needed to spend it for, let's say there's a lawsuit of some sort.
Yeah, right.
We would be able to do that there too. Um, and that is expecting some to go into it as well. So I think either way it works.
I like to see this like it's in the green. I like to see that. Just, it, it looks good to me. I mean.
Well, I'm gonna suggest that since we know that we used a lot that we weren't expecting to this year, uh, but we were also expecting that, I'd actually like to suggest something in the middle, around ten thousand. Instead of the, so it goes down two instead of, uh, the three. That puts a little bit of a cushion in there and hopefully we don't use it, but anything we do shows up as revenue and if we do end up having to overspend the line, it won't be as much. In the end, it's not actually going to change taxes, so.
Whatever you.
Alright.
And I give what you're saying, and I give what you're saying, so.
And you're in the middle.
Well, I'm, yeah.
Well, that, that's where I'm, I'm trying to take that, that middle, and that kind of makes sense, 'cause it is going down. And yes, we can overspend it, and if we really need to overspend it with a true non-reimbursed town expense, we also have the trust fund. So, um, but it's not just me making a decision, so you guys have to.
David, like ten. Okay? You got that written down?
I, I put ten in there.
Good? Next?
Yeah. Uh, the next line is personnel administration.
Oh, I'm not, I've slipped into it.
And.
Oh, I got planning one in the zone.
That, of course, is based on.
Oh.
Salaries and.
Yeah, so what?
It's up there. There's only two lines.
Oh.
I didn't change these. It'll be the one of those, um.
Don't you?
I don't know why I don't.
Oh, you've got it. It's right there.
Oh, I flipped already. Oopsie. I was, I was getting excited about flipping.
This is everybody's, everybody that works for the town.
This is everybody. Well, basically, you know, it's, um, social security and Medicare on the first line. We had budgeted more than we needed, but there's, there's been increase. We're getting closer to that thirty-two figure. The retirement, I'm waiting to hear from the retirement. Um, what has really, one of our staff receives retirement for detailed work. And while we get compensated for that, again, that's on the revenue side, and it doesn't really show here. So it looks like we really, you know, we have, we have, according to this, overspent it by eleven thousand dollars.
So in people's wages. Yeah, we don't include, right, 'cause that's our portion. I just, I haven't always sort of broke it out like that.
Right. It's, you know, you match the same that the employee pays.
Well, yeah, oh, yeah.
As no.
I love that matching. I guess, I guess when I think of somebody's, I guess I've never, yeah, okay.
When I first started, we used to pay the government once a month, go into the bank with a little.
Yeah.
Card.
Oh, yeah. So did I.
And now it's every paycheck, they just whip it out of your account.
Yes, yes. Yes.
So are you saying that you expect that we need this to get updated, or is this after the recommendations as provided by the?
Well, I think if we didn't have that unknown factor in there, we'd be much closer to the forty-one thousand than we are. The unknown factor being how much details one person works. Um, but I'm looking at this and now I'm kinda saying to myself, you know, that's probably not enough.
Yeah, that's a fairly significant amount over.
Um, why don't you let me do more research?
What, what do you feel, what, what do you, I'm not, I don't mean to be slow here. I feel slow.
The pension, should, can I explain it?
Yeah, please.
I remember it doesn't match what's up there and here.
Oh.
Oh, is there a different number?
Oh, goodie. So I'm not.
The retirement one is, on her, her sheet is much less than, than that.
Oh, um, I'm sorry, 'cause I haven't, we updated the what was spent on the electronic one, but not.
Oh, okay.
And I couldn't print from this one, so, sorry.
Alright.
Um.
So, yeah, it's, it's eleven thousand three thirty-one in the negative instead of four thousand whatever on your sheet.
Oh, okay, right, 'cause that, okay, okay, yep, I'm following now.
And I assume that was just the last page.
It's probably been, it, it, that probably hasn't been updated to what.
And of course, moving forward on a budget, you really don't wanna be in the negative on the budget remaining.
No.
No, that's, that's not.
If we can help it.
That's not a good thing. That's not a.
I got it now. I understand. But that's a lot more than what I'm looking at. Okay.
This, this is overdrawn. I don't like to see a department overdrawn or a section of the budget overdrawn.
And, and retirement town, give me, can you give me an example without throwing any names out of there?
The, uh, full-time employees, uh, get New Hampshire retirement, municipal employees.
Okay.
Um, we have New Hampshire retirement. The employee pays, and I'm not gonna get this right, I think it's five percent per paycheck toward their retirement, and the town pays nine for employees and even more for police. Um, and when someone retires, they get a nice nest egg.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's what that is from. It's the town portion, that the town's responsible for the retirement based on what the person has made.
Okay.
Uh, planning and zoning. Russell wants to be the hero on this one.
For, for the sake of argument, just so that we'll be able to see a slightly more accurate overall. Um, I'm gonna change that forty-one thousand to forty-five thousand for now.
Okay. Oh, you're right, you're right.
And so that way, when we see the calculations later on, it'll be at least closer to what we expected about what we end up being.
Alright. Did you change it?
I just did. It didn't show up there. Oh, it's probably because your current meandering.
Come on, people. Let's link together here.
If, if, if you jumped in as soon as you clicked out of here.
Well, I just wrote that, put that in.
Oh, no, as soon as you clicked in, you changed it.
Oh, it did? Oh, I'm sorry.
But you've got an extra forty-five.
I am.
So we're using computers now, yeah.
It does, it does work.
Says you'll have to check.
Planning and zoning, um, Russ, you've lowered the legal budget because that was for the wetlands ordinance. Legal work consultant that you hired. Which coincidentally enough was spent out of the twenty-twenty budget.
Well, you say you like your fund balance.
Well, I do like fund balance, and I have a hard time getting it.
Okay.
I don't see much else there. There's newspaper notices. Russ could cut that because we're not obligated to print some things.
We're no longer have to send planning board public hearing notices to newspapers, just the CBA, which is why I suggested cutting it and have, assuming there's a fifty-fifty split. And then we'll see next year if it actually is a fifty-fifty split.
Russ, you did a fine job.
Well, I do.
We like, Dee likes the green.
That's right. I like the green. You've got that.
How about you, Dave? You good with the green?
I like it.
Alright.
Okay.
Uh, does the publications actually need to go up, or are those some publications that we are expecting in in electronic format instead of lots of huge printed books in the future?
Uh, that's a question I can ask.
Uh, that's a question I can ask this year, but last year they didn't offer it in electronic format.
Okay.
You don't know how much trouble he's giving me over that.
'Cause I know I got one of something like that in electronic format from going to another kind of.
I would love it to have an easier format, that'd make my life so much easier.
Yeah, it's much easier to search for things.
I like Ctrl-F.
Although I do think that for some members, you really should get it in printed form.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
There should always be at least one printed one here and probably for the, the chair.
Maybe one, you know.
All right. I guess we move on?
Yep, yeah, yes, yes.
General government buildings. The unfortunate.
So, so wages went down, how did you, how did you pull that off?
No, wages went up. Red me.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Red means bad, green means good.
Why do I keep messing that? You know what I'm doing? I keep looking in the proposed and I see green.
Oh, gotcha.
And my brain keeps going, oh, well, that looks good. All right, sorry, I will keep looking over. That's right, yes, right, 'cause I knew today was gonna be green.
All right.
And we hope oil and propane will not go any farther up.
Well, yeah. The, so propane is, propane is basically already up thirty percent, uh, for actual pricing of propane, however, we didn't actually use our full budget.
Propane, oil, we're, um, we're with the Merrimack Valley School District, um, and.
I was gonna say, how come they don't lock in?
And they negotiate, they do, and they, and they negotiate a price per gallon and so we are able to spend.
'Cause if you've locked in on propane at the right time, which of course I missed it, but it was, uh, looking pretty nice.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Compared to last year. They're pretty.
Merrimack, being on the board for thirty years and with finance, they're good at that. Yes, they are.
They, yeah, they just did that a couple, a couple meetings ago, so they may have actually just beat it, but that, that's why it's up in the budget. And of course, that's both for the safety building and for here. We, I think they just filled or are just filling at the end of the year up at the safety building, so that will be good for next year's budget for us.
They just got a delivery the other day.
How, how are we here?
Um, we have, we, we had a delivery earlier this month.
Okay. That means that we're probably in pretty good shape for, for next year this way then. But we are talking, we're talking a few hundred dollars, not a few thousand dollars here, so, I think it makes sense to just go ahead and leave it hedged that way.
But it's not green.
I know. Uh, and of course postage has gone up.
Hey, I'd love to see that electricity all off of solar, that would be big.
Yeah, how did we end up going down for electricity all buildings? Is that just because of the, uh, savings from our public safety building while all of the, uh, light savings and stuff that we?
Well, that was based on our historic, um, use and it may have been calculated before the latest bills were posted this month. So, but I think that.
'Cause I know Unitil's got massive increases right now.
Right, and I didn't know that when I figured this, so, you know, that could impact that.
Of course, we would expect them to go back down in another six months in the summer.
Do you think they will?
They'll go back down because of the way that seasonal rates happen here, but I, whether they'll go back down to the way that they were last summer, uh, or just down a little bit, that's, um, questionable, so.
But it's not, I mean, like, you, I mean, what I think what you're saying here is there was budget remain of eight, but you, you're wondering if that eighteen hundred is really accurate, 'cause you don't.
Well, what I have now, if you had an up-to-date form, you'd know that we spent twelve, two eighty-four.
It's also up there.
I know.
Whichever is easier for you, doesn't matter.
I know.
So, we only had, you know, seven hundred sixteen, so if I lower it by a thousand, now I'm in the whole two hundred. Whatever that is, eighty-four dollars, but.
I'd like you to check and see how that is, looks like it will work out with, um, the historic pricing, like, 'cause I know we go up each winter and I know this is higher than we normally go up in the winter.
This time, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, which of course is also when we get the least amount back from solar. And generally, high rates are fine for us because we make most of it back from the solar, 'cause it gives us an offset, uh, of actually more electricity than we use. And that comes in as revenue.
We did have a, kind of a mix-up this year that we weren't paying the electric bill for the two solar, um, installations. And that runs about eighty dollars apiece for those. So, maybe I should recalculate that.
Okay.
But as far as the rates, I suppose, how would I do that? Would I look at the latest bills compared to a bill from the summer?
I, I would look at the current rate versus, say, last December's January's rate.
Okay.
And whatever the percentage difference there is, that's probably a reasonable percentage difference.
Okay.
'Cause I can't imagine that they would drop further than they did last year as percentage-wise. They're required to not make money on the electric portion, but they constantly move more into other charges too, so.
When you said the electric portion, you mean like the power itself?
There's supply and there's delivery.
Yeah.
Supply portion, they're not allowed to make money on, um, in theory.
They also get paid to improve things.
Yes, but that's all in your delivery and other various fees and charges.
Still, think about a business where you get paid to improve.
Oh, yes.
Wouldn't that be fantastic? If I was a logger, we'd be millionaires.
It's because they are regulated monopoly.
That's right.
All right. So, that moves us on to the cemetery.
Cemetery and they're, they're asking for the same amount in their budget as they had last year and you see that one of their accounts, you encumbered some money from that the other day.
What was, what covers the contracted service, what services, what are they contracted to?
Uh, for the cemeteries to be mowed.
Okay.
They hire, they hire Emmett to mow the cemeteries.
Thank you. All right, changes there is good. That moves us to the insurances.
But, but it's green in the right column, right?
Well, it, it's green overall too.
Yeah, really.
That's a miracle.
Yeah, yeah, mine didn't do that.
Yeah, right.
The, I think that the, the factor is the health insurance is down and I wouldn't, I wouldn't put too much stock that that's gonna continue because they had a very, with COVID, they did not have many claims, as many claims as normal. And we're in a pool and that means they can adjust their rates accordingly. So, the health insurance looks great this year, although this is the first time that I've ever known health insurance to go down.
Right, and you can, you can actually say that historically, that's a lot of years.
Yeah. The, the, the line you didn't have before is the dental insurance. The, uh, we had decided to look into dental insurance and that is, uh, and again, the price that you see there is the full price, but the town actually only pays eighty-five percent of that.
Eighty-five percent?
Eighty-five percent, 'cause employee pays fifteen with the exception of one member.
Is that the same way that it's reflected for health insurance?
It's full, that's the full price for.
Okay.
Yeah. And again, um, not gonna always consistent, but, you know, that's gonna come out that way.
So, in essence, fifteen percent of that, yeah, is shown as revenue taken out of employee paychecks?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Moves us to police.
These are the figures that were given to you by the chief. His overall budget's down almost three thousand. And increases in his salary because of his contract, um, he's given raises or he's proposing, um, some hefty wages on his full-time line.
And that's a sizable increase for the secretary wages too, after the really large percentage increase last year.
Yeah, that's true.
Full-time officer wages are up even though he hasn't had the full complement of part-time officers. Hopefully, they're all wanting to work, so that's great. Contracted services was dispatch, so they don't have much of a choice there and that's the, the highest percentage change, uh, other than Emma, which is a few hundred dollars difference, but is actually the highest percentage change.
Well, we knew that was coming, 'cause you said that was so crazy.
Oh, we knew about the contracted services too. Well, so, his budget is one percent increase overall, but that's also not really accurately reflective because of the vehicle maintenance line.
Twenty-two thousand five hundred.
That was primarily there to offset the insurance revenue and repayment for the cruiser. So, that twenty-two thousand five hundred would actually need to be added back in, uh, or, sorry, we, yeah. So, if I change, just for the sake of it, I'm gonna take twenty-twenty-one and put it down to the normal amount here. And so that, without accounting for that, it would actually be a nine, no, nine-plus percent increase in the department budget. So, we, we get a, he gets a very favorable, um, benefit from the vehicle maintenance because of the way we had to do it for accounting last year.
It's not true, it's not in my mind.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, he's really up almost nine and a half percent. But it shows is up one percent. Full-time officer wages, uh, we did approve one and, actually, I think we approved two. But we definitely approved one, uh, within the last month or so. And the other one is expected, if not approved, so. And we knew that the, the one that we did not approve most recently, uh, was expected to be larger than usual, again, to come back up to normal rates or closer to normal rates. So, these are not unexpected figures for the full-time officer wages. I guess the questions would be the secretary and part-time officer wages since I know we, we haven't had the, the part-time officers, uh, the whole time. So, I can definitely expect that we would spend more than we did this year, um, 'cause we now have closer to a full complement of them. However, having not spent it, seems also a little bit weird that it's going up. So, we should probably ask about those two items. Any other comments, questions, you disagree with me? I think we should just give them a sixty percent raise.
No, I mean, it's, I mean, I, I, I get on some of the police wages, 'cause.
They're hard to find.
Right, but, but that being said.
Flying demand.
We need to be, you know, mindful.
Yes.
Of it and, you know, so I, and I'm kind of with you on, yeah. Just those two question marks, I feel the same way you do.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
As we kind of already, with the chief's salary, that was already.
Yeah, we, we made that contract.
The contract, that's right, that's right.
So, what is the secretary, what is she? It's the same, it's the same one. What, is, is the rate going up the same on all these? I can't remember what the rate was. The same thing on all of the, where she works?
No. The, the, I believe all except for the secretary wages are stipends and as far as I'm aware, everyone that has a stipend and has requested an increase, with the exception of health, has been a three percent and have generally requested that each year. The secretarial was a very high percentage last year because there were other factors, uh, being considered, both in COVID and other amounts.
Yeah, because they were working extra because of COVID and stuff like that.
And so, a lot of that was considered in there for previous large increases. And so, uh, I'm not quite sure, maybe there's more hours involved now and so maybe that's why it's a larger increase than, you know, the normal, but you don't know. So, that, that's why asking is what makes sense.
Yeah.
And I know that he wants, that, uh, our chief wants to use the part-time officers more.
Yeah.
But at the same time, it's, it's not like we're pushing out overtime, so.
Right, which would probably offset the part-time.
Right, right. All right, let's move on to the next one, which is pretty simple. Ambulance, we get a figure, we have to pay it.
Yeah.
And that's from Hopkinton?
Hopkinton.
Yeah.
Fire department. As per, ever since I've been on the board, the request was, I'm going to try to keep everything the same. If there are large increases everywhere else, then want similar for his department, 'cause he wants to take care of his people. However, this is all that, um, interesting stipend work and.
The fourth quarter of the last year, the bill didn't get to us till February, which is, so there's five quarters in this budget, which is why it's showing overdrawn, seven thousand dollars.
And it, and it's, what they do is they divide the amount by four and then each quarter, they divide the amount out per the people that were responding and hand out stipends that way. That's not quite the full details, but that's the short version of it. Yeah, I would be curious to know if there are more people on the department now. If there are, we may want to raise that stipend amount to account for the addition of people.
I think there are more people on the department. Of course, what happens now is everyone gets less stipend amount. Stay the same, so that's.
So, we should, we should ask that amount.
Also, Emmett spoke the other night about a thousand dollars for some software.
Uh, yes.
Is that in here?
Did you add that in here?
No. And I'm not quite sure where I'm gonna put it.
We had discussed that, instead of having.
It sounded like a good.
It was gonna go, uh, like the I am responding, but not the same one.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm just gonna do, can I do it? So, I will just put some question marks in for the account number. And that was the recording. So, I'll just mark it W F D. So I'll just mark it WFD Reporting Service.
And then I had a question, now it flew, after you asked, that it flew a lot on my brain. Oh, well, something about words, what we were talking about last, when we're done. I can't remember. That's a big help.
Hate that.
I know.
Well, when we were talking about how it kind of makes it more accurate, too, the fact of a thousand dollars would do reporting.
Yeah, no, right, that's, no, I remember that, there's something else I was thinking.
And you can tell that he's adding numbers when you look at the bunker gear line.
Right, but which line?
Bunker gear, uniforms, clothing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Well, that's, that's a combination of a couple things. The overdraw is somewhat because of adding people, but also they ordered and decided to keep several of the dress uniforms due to the event that happened at the beginning of the year.
And I also know, well, actually, I think they use the capital reserve account for bunker gear that gets out of date.
So there's a combination of kind of all of it that's, that's in there. I don't know which came from which, but there's, there's a bit of everything that's gone into there to make it over, which is why I don't think we need to suggest that it get raised.
I knew what it was. Schooling, if they go to school, they're supposed to get reimbursed if they, is that here someplace, too?
Uh, yeah, that's training, which is the third line.
Training, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, so that takes care of all that, all right, I was talking about that.
Yeah, and we, we've typically paid all of those training reimbursements out of the budget, with the exception of some that might have been like capital area grants or something like that.
Okay, so it came out of this budget?
It, it has always traditionally come out of this budget. Some of them this year have not, because they came out of the Sinda Memorial Fund.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay, but I, I think that was the thing.
That may or may not continue going forward, because that's a regional thing, it's not a Webster only thing.
That was the thing, if we, I think that was my question, if they pay for classes, they should get reimbursed from us, the firefighters.
The firefighters are getting reimbursed, but some, previously was always the town, now most of the time it's been the town, and occasionally has been the reimbursement from the memorial fund instead of from the town. So that's why, even though this is, even though training has a remaining budget, I would not expect that we would lower that.
No.
Because that is not funding the week as a town can count on. Even though it's very nice when we get it. Any other questions or comments about fire?
No.
That moves us to code enforcement, which I'll let Russ go for, because I know he came up with it. And we're gonna keep it this way.
I would suggest we keep it the same, because we didn't get the code enforcement operating until halfway through the year, so we're in that, you're fully your boss's picture. And we originally planned, I think, last year for the additional position, but I think we intended to have adopted sooner in the year rather than now.
Correct.
Looks good to me.
All right. You as well?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, so that brings us to emergency management, which is emergency management. I don't think I've ever seen any of these changed, so. Which is the way you typically expect stipend positions to operate.
Right.
Well, this is a big one, I don't even know what we can do about it.
Now, rescue, other public safety rescue expense is basically a placeholder in case we have to spend a bunch of money.
I would suggest we change that to twenty-five thousand.
No, you know.
We didn't ask you.
Good answer.
The, the good and the bad about this is that it's sitting in our budget. And, okay, we've got a hundred dollars, and we probably, hopefully, will never really need to use it. But if, for example, we have a forest fire, this line item is getting way overdrawn, and that could cause problems with the overall budgeting picture. So, I, I know we've got other funds that can, that we put stuff into in case we have a forest fire, for example.
That's what I was gonna say, that's what I saw.
But any additional or beyond that, et cetera, would have to come out of this budget item, and we'd get overdrawn. And so that would look a little bit odd if something went to happen.
That could be a situation as well, because the state also reimburses for forest fires, and again, it would be in the revenue side.
Well, and some now they're starting to charge people, too.
Yeah.
It all depends on the situation.
Yeah, that's right.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but if we look like we're absolutely having, let's say it's a giant disaster, and we have to spend however much, let's say fifty thousand on rescue expenses, at that point, as a municipality, would we be required to go get bond?
You were saying, because if you were to overdraw the entire budget because of this emergency?
To do that?
Well, the DRA, you would contact the DRA, and you might need to have, go to, have a judge give you permission to overspend it, or to re, have a special town meeting to re-appropriate, a worst-case scenario.
Okay, so there are processes to handle that.
But obviously, and that's why we have the fund balance for specifically items like that.
Fun.
All right, that's done, Dave.
Fund done.
All right, that moves us to highways and streets, which is currently overspent.
And we have some more bills that's going against that, I don't think we've budgeted enough in there.
It doesn't look like it, however, this is approximately overspent by the amount that was reduced in the block grant funding from the previous years. So I think our overall spend has actually stayed similar, but the block grant portion is less because we got less in block grant from the state. The.
How is the block grant determined?
It's a calculation.
Never mind, don't ask.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like actuary.
Tells us what we can get.
I don't know whether it's actu- actuary, I don't know if it's that fancy.
No, but you know what I mean, you know what I mean when you're.
I think it comes, that comes through the, the highway tax or the gas tax, and so it all depends on.
And can, so if this does happen, does he, is, is he able to take some money?
He can use the highway block grant, provided it's for highways, that's what it's.
Oh, which is next page?
That's the next, that's the next budget.
Okay.
Which was reminding me in a message that I believe I sent to you, highways and streets showing an overspend of sixteen oh seven for the calcium chloride, which is our road salt. The highway block grant is sixteen twenty-five not spent, and do we have to give that back to the state if we don't spend it?
No, we, we have, the, the rule is, you have to spend at least as much as the block grant on highways and streets.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
And we do.
That's easy.
You had spoken to me about the, you know, the overage and the short, but we've got more bills that are coming out of that highway block grant, so we, any excess, we will take care of.
Knowing, knowing we don't have to give it back, I'm not worried anymore.
Yeah, no, you don't have to give it back.
So that's good.
If you didn't, if you spent fifty thousand dollars overall on roads, well, we'd owe them twenty thousand dollars.
What was that, if you've been?
If we didn't spend the amount, we have to spend at least the amount they give us.
Oh, okay, well, we'll always do that, no problem.
Of course you will, yeah.
Yeah. All right. So highways and streets is another one where he says, well, I'll stick to the, to the same amounts, but obviously, that didn't work this past year.
Well, will it be worth this past year? If we take some money from the highway block grant?
Well, no, because the.
I don't like, no.
The block grant is, the block grant overall, currently only has sixteen twenty-five remaining. Highways and streets overall is ten thousand one oh five overspent, and there's more bills coming in before the end of the year.
Do you know what they are?
Yes, they're bills for the last few storms we've had. And we're trying to get them, well, they, they would be charged back to this year's budget anyway, because they have.
But there again, that could go the other way, when we hit, for all we know, when we, it could go worse or it could go better
Exactly.
On the other side.
I mean, if you have a really easy winter, you, you know, your highway budget's easy, you have a lot of storms, I mean, storms are expensive.
And last year's winter was actually not bad.
Right.
It was a few major storms, but we didn't have constant stuff. So this is looking at it as having had a good year, and we're still overspent.
Emmett's really accomplished a lot in the last year in the highways, and whereas the previous year, because of COVID, he didn't do as much.
We did tell him to run.
So, there was a lot of work to do, and I think he did much more this year.
I guess the, the thing is, is as you're saying this, but is there, you know, I know he's done a lot of culvert replacements, I mean, I know there'll be the general, the gentleness of, I think where, where I'd be concerned of worrying about it, putting more to the budget is, we gotta ask him, you know, he's, he's done a certain amount of roads that are not gonna, I mean, granted, he'll always clean the ditches, a lot of little material, but we should really ask him, do you see something that's gonna take you, can you come out of that hole going into next year?
And, and again, this is, this budget is used for general maintenance of the roads, and, and nothing like repaving roads or things like that.
You mean the one that was ten thousand dollars in the, in the rear?
Yeah.
Well, he did do some big, deep ditches on your road, I could say.
Well, all, all of the, all of the large, major work, when, for example, we did concrete drive, or when.
That's a different thing.
Right, all of those things come out of our trust and reserve funds. So we have those two, which care, fortunately, those carry a balance, so if they're a little over, a little under, you know, each year, it's not a problem, we just keep using it going forward.
I'll leave this budget the way it is, he knows what he's doing.
I think we need to ask him to make sure that it's actually okay, because it's fairly dramatically over.
Ten?
Because we haven't gotten them all yet.
No, well, we didn't.
I was gonna say Christ.
Oh, we're not all, it's not all in this budget?
No.
No.
There, there are bills they haven't charged back yet.
I'm sure it's fun with the paperwork to make sure you get it in the exact right area, so I may wanna just check with him and is that right, is that right to say?
That is right to say, um, he's very good with that, and as far as the highway equipment and labor, that's pretty straightforward when he sends his bills.
Right, right, yeah.
So I don't, I don't think there's really anything that's in the wrong category.
This is, Marj, we need to make sure that this won't be expected to end up a similar overspend next year.
Usually, I mean, when you do a budget, and, or just what I think, and you look at it, and it's overdrawn, and you could say, well, it's because we had X happen, and we weren't expecting that.
Right, right.
Or, we didn't budget enough, and, you know.
So we gotta ask him that question?
I'm certainly sensitive to taxes and all the others, but, you know, it takes money to take care of a town.
Is, is this, is this, is this, is this fairly, does this happen a lot?
I don't think so.
I haven't seen it go over before.
I think, I think this is the first.
It's going to be fine, but we need to ask him to make sure.
Do we have the num, no, I have my. I'm sorry, my brain is thinking, and my mouth is talking before I open my eyes, okay?
You remember, your sheet doesn't have it, it's on the sheet here, that shows you the, the, what he's spent to date.
No, I, oh.
So you, you're showing a little less.
No, I think I've got, my eyes are getting bad both ways. I see that right here, I have, I have.
Yeah, but what if ten, ten thousand?
I just have ten thousand three twenty-five for the remaining balance, oh, over. Okay.
All right, next page.
Well, that's highway block grant, which is, it gets spent, and it comes in as revenue, so it is what it is. Which brings us to solid waste disposal.
Yeah, it's gonna be what it is, there's, there's not much we can do about it.
Yeah, this is bit, well, so it's a budgeted amount based on Hopkinton's projections for the cost to run the transfer station.
Yeah.
And this, this isn't necessarily always exactly what you would expect. The amount that we budget is the amount that we expect to pay. However, some things we see as a revenue from them, for example, what they get back from recycling, and or tipping fees and that sort of thing. And some of that I know comes in as revenue, and some of it, some, appears to also just mean we don't give as much back. So.
Oh, really?
So I'm not sure exactly which way that all shows up, but the budget has always reflected the full amount that they expect, or when you need to pay for that percentage that we owe for the year. And that's always the way that that's been done, so.
Well, the money, if we don't spend it, it comes back, it's back in the general fund anyway, so it's not like.
Then it comes back into our unsigned fund, and uses to offset taxes.
Right, so it's not a big deal.
That's why Dee said, well, said, flip it.
All right, that brings us to health.
And this is the budget that Roy gave you.
And this, this is another where it's, um, is this actually, is this a stipend, or is this actually a higher?
This is a stipend.
Okay, so this is actually a stipend?
Yeah.
I'm gonna add the word stipend here.
And I think Roy changed it, he's been quite busy this year.
He's been very busy.
He knows what he's doing.
The change was requested based on hours of work. But again, it's, this is one of those things where we need to figure out what and how we're doing things with stipends, so that we can fairly do things, and do it in a legal way where it's not considered changes based on wages or hours worked, which apparently, the fire department has shown us is not legal in the past, so.
So why is it down, what, the, the stipend, is that under health administration?
Health administration stipend.
Oh, okay, all right, so I put it in the other thing.
And the others are.
Health agency?
Yeah.
So what is that, health agencies, is that, we, we pay to somebody, or?
Yeah, we make a contract, FRBNA is the Franklin, which is.
Oh, regional, oh, that's, okay, so we're doing the BNA?
And CASA is the.
And what?
CASA is, what's that, the child advocate?
Yeah, yeah, so that's why it's went down, okay, that looks like a good, to me.
Well, those stayed the same.
No, no, I mean the total budget, I'm looking at the bottom.
It went up five hundred seventy-five.
Yeah, but not much.
We're in the red.
The percentage is large, but the dollar amount is not.
The percentage on these, I mean, they're, I think they're helpful in some cases, but other cases, they just don't make sense.
And I know they know what they're doing, Paul, I'm in my, so.
Okay, so that brings us then, unless there's further questions on that?
No.
Right, that brings us to welfare.
Who handles that?
Me.
Okay, that's like, that's like, is it over, because we're just gonna say no?
Well, we had a really rugged year this way, financially, much more than we normally have, I think that's tapered off quite a bit.
You're seeing a change?
You know, it's, I, I, I think it's, fortunately, there are some cases that I no longer have.
That's one thing I have to say, for all, many years, it's, our welfare budget's been really cheap. That's one thing I have to say, for all, many years, it's, our welfare budget's been really cheap.
Right.
And I was, because I, because I write for Bosch and all, you know, I can see what theirs has been.
Yeah, right, right.
But we're lucky. I don't know what happened, but maybe we got a lot of people that just, they don't want help because they're cool.
Well, I think it's the size of the town, um, and, and a lot of it has to do with, most of the housing in Webster, people own their own homes.
Yeah, exactly, right.
And so they don't have apartments and things like that. That makes a huge difference.
We are kind of thought of as a rich town in the Merrimack Valley school district.
Well, I, I know how wealthy you are. I just am amazed every day. But I think that has a lot to do with it. Um, maybe the lack of, um, you know, of business community as well, um, might have something to do with it. But, I mean, the cases I had, um, were, um.
Well, this was an extraordinary year. You can't.
They were unusual.
Right, you can't like, compare it to 20 years ago or 10 or next year either. Who knows?
You know, you're doing your best to keep the town from being sued.
Yeah, right.
But then you have someone that says to you, well, I'm overdoing my light bill. And I'll say, well, how much are you overdoing the light bill? $2,400. Well, you can't pay a $2,400 light bill. And by the way, how did that happen? But anyway.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
But so, uh, and again, the, the director's salary, that's the other part of my salary. And you gave me a very generous raise and I appreciate it, thank you.
Boy, that's kind of, we must like you.
Well, I don't know why, cause I can be a pain in the ass, but.
Any further questions on welfare?
No, gotta pay, no problem.
Yeah, and we do also have a, a separate fund for welfare as well, in case we have a particularly bad year, so we can absorb a change. And then change the budget from the year following.
Some things in that, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it might be up though, so.
Yeah.
What was that?
The ARPA might be up the ballpark for some of the welfare.
And maybe some of my cases might, I should look at that.
Get the whip out for him, will you?
I look out for him. That's, that's why I'm here.
I go home every night crying.
And I have to put them all together at the beginning of the day, say he's gonna do a great job and put it in his office. So Community Action Program hasn't changed?
She's going to come in and talk to you as well.
And are, are.
In regards to what though?
She, she just, she wants a chance to tell you what they're doing. And I think it's good for you to hear.
Yeah.
And I will say, that really does help us with our welfare program because they're.
The Community Action, yeah.
They're great as far as when I, you know, they can do things that I can't.
And then we have Parks and Rec.
Dee, this is green.
Yeah, my color.
I'm looking in the right column, it's green.
Yeah, they're all green.
I don't know how we can complain about that.
Well, except for electricity, but, you know, whatever.
Looks good to me.
It's not red, so I like it.
I do too.
All right, any other questions there?
No.
All right, that moves us to the library, which is amazing.
It's still green.
Yeah.
Mine is not colored. What?
Oh dear.
Are you looking at the library?
Quick, get the highlighter.
I think I must need, I must need a new copy machine.
You just said, well, it's Marla, just color mine anyway.
That, um, as Marty told you when he was in, they had some, uh, income from their investments that. They had not accounted for last year, so that's why they dropped. His budget's on the left of what their actual budget is.
Yeah, and so this, you, you noticed the, uh, from investment dividend portion that's sitting there. That's actually multi, multiple years of it because they had not realized that it was there. And so they're taking it all back in one shot, uh, to offset. And so we get a dramatic decrease in the budget this year, but their budget would go back up next year. Because that, that from investment dividend will continue to exist, but will not be that large in future years. But it works out great for us this year.
Yeah, right, exactly. Let's stop complaining. Okay, green, I like it.
Patriotic purposes, Old Home Day, that, nothing has really changed there.
Haven't done anything, could be.
Well, there's, there's only a tiny bit of budget.
That's right, they did.
Yeah, they got to do something this year. I know there were questions and challenges about how that was to be handled for the accounting and the payments. Uh, has that been, been worked out?
I think we've worked that out.
Okay, good.
I, you know, that really does need to go through the finance office and not the way we were doing it.
Okay. All right, well, knowing that that is taken care of. It's the same as it's been and that's probably fine.
Kind of, can we send it, it's green, that's good?
Yeah, that's, that's the same as it has been.
Yeah.
The.
Do we give them, just because we give them about $500?
Yes, yeah.
And a lot of the kids, like, before and after school.
No, I remember, yeah. I never used it, but.
Nor know what'll be interesting is the next one here, Webster Youth Soccer Donation. We've always had that donation each year.
And we donate it to town.
We donate as the town to the, to the organization. However, there is no longer a Webster Youth Soccer.
No, and that's what I was gonna ask you.
Really?
It's now Merrimack Valley Soccer League.
It's an entire league through the Merrimack Valley District.
Kind of like the baseball.
It's a combination of towns.
Oh, oh.
So you go show up, let's say at Boswen and try out and then they debut you on the jeans?
Oh, oh.
Where Webster actually used to have, yeah.
Right. That doesn't seem in a way fair, well, cause they probably lost a lot, cause they didn't have some of these monster kids at some of these towns.
It's a little bit of a bummer in my mind, but it doesn't, I mean, I.
It takes away some of the town pride.
Yeah, right, right.
But it probably enhances the competitiveness of close nature.
Well.
Having better competition.
And the kids get to know, know each other. I'll tell you.
Well, that's true, yeah, that's.
One of my, my oldest had, he had seven kids in his, all through school. Two boys and four girls. So when he went over to Boswen, or not Boswen, you know, to the Merrimack Valley. At this point, you meet, um, all these kids that have all been hanging out together.
Yeah.
And that was, that was, I mean, the next boy, which is just the next year, there was 20 kids. So, but.
I know, yeah.
But that, that makes for a difference for trans, trans.
That happened to be.
So it's probably not a bad thing to keep combining, that, so you get to know each other as you will be together.
Well, so the, the point here is for the, for the budget.
We don't need to have it anymore.
It doesn't seem like it's a thing that we would donate towards anymore, cause isn't it through the school system at this point?
Um, I think it is. It's a, it's a division of that. We do, and this is not reflected in this budget, but. The town has traditionally paid for the porta potty when they use the field in the summer.
Well, we should have a porta potty out there too.
Well, it's a good idea.
It's a very good idea.
Yeah.
So is that what you're gonna say?
Have we currently pulled that from Parks and Recs or from government buildings maintenance or what?
I've been, I've been taking it from, uh, government buildings, cause I didn't have it really in Parks and Recs.
Okay. So that's not coming from this anyway, so I think we're fine to.
So what do you wanna do with that money? Cause why leave it then?
Yeah, I think, I think we can zero this.
Yeah, but where do you, are we gonna still do something with 250 bucks?
And we did not pay it this year, because we weren't sure what to do.
So just put it back in the budget. You don't have to do anything with that 250 bucks.
For the Russell.
Well, I, I think the way to look at it is that the, we're still gonna be doing the porta potty stuff. But rather than having some specific donation, we're just taking care of.
Yeah, so this will be eliminated, this whole thing will be eliminated, right?
Uh, eventually it should fall off the budget. This year it would show.
Same on paper. That's right.
Uh, Energy Committee is next. And I guess I'll speak on that one. Uh, that is, the $50 was there previously as the expected cost to go to a. Conference, which is the local energy, uh, conference. And the, previously that was expected to be a personal membership that the chair held. And then the $50 was to cover, uh, basically the, the charge to go there to get the tickets. The year previous, um, they opened it up so that anyone in government could go for free. And so that's when I went, uh, initially, uh, with him. And then this past year, it was no longer that way. They were back to charging again. And rather than relying on an individual's personal membership that they happened to have. They also offer many services to the town, uh, in the way of energy and energy consulting and so on. Uh, and so the town, uh, signed up as an emiciple member so that we could then do that. And so this increase covers the cost of that membership and the expected amount to be able to attend for two members of the committee.
Sounds good to me. We just gained 250 dollars.
That moves us to Conservation Commission.
So my question is, what is other conservation? What is that? Why do they need that money?
I think that was for, at one time, they said they were going to be having educational programs. Regarding conservation for the community. Um, that hasn't happened.
Last year.
As you see.
Yeah, the previous, for this particular budget, uh, Budget 2021, the reason that it was at, uh, left at the. Same amount as the previous year at the 2,500, uh, was because they were expecting to be. Printing flyers, going out and doing more education around the wetlands ordinance. As you can see from the, the budget, they, they have not used much of it doing that. But that was the, the request then. Um, other things that would be. Other things that would go into other conservation would be things like, uh, if they were paying for trail maintenance. Uh, or, uh, mapping out of new locations, uh, et cetera. Not to be confused with their overall conservation fund, which is where the land use change tax stuff goes to. And that would be, that could be used for, um, for example, surveying or, uh, helping somebody enter into an agreement or. Uh, purchasing, um, an easement. Whereas this other conservation would not be used for that. One of the things that's in the master plan, uh, and has been for a while. Is the expectation that the Conservation Commission will map and provide maps and trails. Throughout our conservation lands for people to be able to access and to go enjoy our conserved lands. And we haven't gotten those. But this line item would be something that, that if we were to say, hey, you should be providing this, can you do that this year? This is where that would come out of the budget.
How come it doesn't just come from the other, it's part of the one current use? Because to me, that's where it makes the most sense, cause you're conserving the.
That particular fund is, uh, regulated by RSAs.
Okay. So what we do with this is when we ask again and then we decide if we think that that's.
Yeah, so, so question would be, you know, what are you gonna be using this on this year? Uh, should it stay this way? Are you going to do the trail maps sort of thing? And if they say yes and, and or this is what we're gonna use it for.
Shouldn't they have some budgeted numbers for what the trail maps would cost? Like, other people have to know?
They should. Uh, I, I'm saying that that's one of the things that would be in here, not that they've used it as justification.
Yes, okay. Well, that's kind of makes sense. I'm kind of listening to what you're saying. To me, that's where you.
But it would be nice to have trail, because Boswen's doing that, now they're trail, making the markings and they have little names for the trails.
And Warner's been doing lots of trails and doing, uh, like guided nature walk kind of places for people to take out and do their own.
Boy, we used to do those, Betsy, did you, Betsy Jane Lee, which.
She's written a lot for, I've read her stuff in your paper.
She has, she used to take us out. I remember when my boys were little, she was so good. Listen to that, that's a. Some, this, I mean, it was, she was fabulous. I wish we had more people that would do that, cause that would make people really appreciate.
So, so I think we should ask the Conservation Commission to come in and.
Yeah, good idea.
Justify this and ask about trail maps.
I think with so many people interested in walking and stuff like that, I think it's a good.
Especially now that it can, that I.
Yeah, right.
Everybody just wants to go do their own thing.
Something, right.
Nature's the perfect place for it.
Yeah.
When would you like them to come in?
Uh, I mean, if they can make it on Monday, that would be awesome, cause we're talking to all the different departments about their budgets then. If not, then, I mean, they could also just provide us a.
Yeah.
A response.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine too.
Do you happen to know when their next meeting is?
They meet the second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
Usually.
So the whole conserva, if they know, they can provide us something for next Monday.
I get it, what you're saying.
If they don't, it would have to be the next meeting after that, uh, after they've met. But, okay.
It's really green.
I know. And mine is green too.
Long-term debt. Uh, that is down because, well, it's the last year, so we don't have to pay as much interest and stuff. So that's awesome. And.
That is awesome.
And this will be the last year of it.
Yeah. What was it based on?
That was the bond for the.
Yeah, this is the public safety building bond.
So it's the last year, 10 years. I think we had it for 10.
20.
20?
Last of your 20-year loan.
Gotcha.
Have parties?
Yeah, should. Next summer. And this one's even, this short-term note, boy, that's a tough one to look at.
So that's another, in case we ever have to do something based on future tax.
That's a placeholder.
It's a placeholder, so hopefully it never gets used. It shouldn't the way that we.
So you could put $2 in there, that would be 100%.
Right, right, it goes your percentage.
I have one thing I really wanna say.
Yes.
I looked this thing over, the capital improvement program. I was, I mean, this is so good. These people that did this deserve a medal. It's so professional. It's so, and so much information in it. I am so impressed.
There were some really, there were some really good pieces.
Terrific stuff. I mean, um, this is so good and I know it wasn't taking people a long time, so thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I mean, I have the report from last time. I just got. I, I was gonna say. I updated all the forms.
Take the bow.
My one comment was gonna be that there's a lot that says 2021, uh, or proposed for 2021.
A lot of it is 2021, because that's when the update.
I still like it. I don't care what year it was.
I don't have the data for 2022 yet.
It's information then.
Well, no, it was like, we are proposing this for 2021.
Oh, wow, it was a draft, I can go and fix that.
But that was it. Other than that, like, yeah.
I tried it all. I think you did a great job. I'm so impressed.
I loved all of the random extra, like, uh, statistical stuff.
Yeah, I had to update a lot of that.
You know, I have to say, it was Sue Roth that really set that up. And she, you know, is top notch. And, you know.
Maybe we should send, the, the select board should send a little note to these people.
Well, Sue, Sue, Sue wasn't doing that this year.
No, but she.
Well, she was on the committee. She was not able to come to the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
So it was Sue, Roger Becker, um, Craig, um, Fornier and Wesley.
Cause Sue, Sue has obviously chaired it multiple times, so.
But they, it's, I mean, it's so professional.
But Sue, I think, is the one that really pulled that program together and got the, you know, so, the template.
Well, I like to thank people that do things.
To, I mean, I think.
Yeah, definitely to bring up the weight stuff.
I think Russ did a good job, cause it's difficult, even if you're just kind of changing figures, to make sure you get in the right spot.
I mean, and it's a volunteer thing too. I mean, it's, you know.
The last time those tables hadn't been updated, I think, so.
We have, I guess the comment I have on that, and maybe I'm being premature talking about it, but, um. Some of the projects weren't really specified for years, six, the whole six years in the future. So when you, when you go to do your warrant articles, I think you wanna keep that in mind as to what you're gonna decide to save, because you know you're gonna have projects.
Speaking of, CIP is perfect. That brings us to. Speaking of, CIP is perfect. That brings us to funding for warrant articles. Which is all the way back at the beginning of this stuff.
I mean, in the CIP, do they miss things, CIP things?
Uh, no, it's in our budget spreadsheets.
Should be that tiny, the tiny...
Oh, I know, and I put, see, I'm thinking all we're done, so I put everything...
That's why, that's the main reason why we have the screen.
Oh, I can't even see that screen. For the conference, that's what I do. I roll up.
The idea was this.
Probably the printers.
One change in that is, um, Phil told me that rather than, we had 21 in there before, which was the recommendation of the CIP, and Phil said the police crews are only needed 18.
So that would counter what the chief told us last week. So, and Phil, so...
So I guess that would be a question that needs to be answered.
I, I would actually like to leave that, I think, unless they're...
That's what he gave me.
Oh, this is what he gave me? ETF, so police equipment, C, police equipment, okay, capital reserve, police equipment, 15. Okay, so he's proposing that we drop that one.
Yeah, I only changed the police one.
Which... Okay, yeah, it's got a significant amount sitting in it, so I think that's fair. So police equipment CR, which is line 17, not that you can necessarily see or count that.
Police equipment...
If you look up on the screen at the purple box. The, the one that's moving back and forth. That one right there, it's 2,000, and they're suggesting that go down to 1,500. That was a previous amount, um, and you can see over here that there is a significant balance sitting in the fund. So I would agree with dropping it down to 1,500. Any concerns or reservations with that?
Dropping's good, dropping's good.
Right, exactly.
All right. Police vehicle ETF.
That's right.
Oh, that's the police vehicle maintenance one. Uh, we propose that we put some in there. They're proposing nothing.
What maintenance one?
Police vehicle ETF. It's over on the right-hand side.
Oh, thank you.
All over. Oh, you can't really see it. It's over off the screen. It's on the right-hand side.
Aren't we, they don't want any of that in here?
So now you can see that bouncing. They're suggesting nothing. Um, this is when they go over on the vehicle maintenance line, that they would use this. We had been expecting and suggesting that that would be higher, because we had to use some of it, and we wanted, uh, for the police cruiser portion and the replacement, and we wanted to be able to replace the amount. Um, I don't think I'm comfortable making it nothing, since that amount that's sitting in there is good, but not, like, future-proofy, kind of, I'm gonna take care of anything that happens to the vehicle, especially when they're newer vehicles. Um, so I think we should drop it, but maybe make it, say, 1,000 instead of 5,000.
Okay, perfect. Let's do it.
What do you think?
Sounds good to me.
All right. And let's see, public safety building, capital reserve fund was set to 5, and they are suggesting it stay at 5, so no change there. And police cruiser, they're suggesting go down to 18 from what we had done as 21. It was 19,000 last year, and 17,000 the year before, been raised, because the cost of cruisers is going up, not down. Um, with the amount that is in there, which is only 9,459, I don't feel comfortable dropping this below previous year 11. And... So I think that it should at least be that 19,000, if not the originally requested 21,000 that they, in the CIP.
Who dropped it?
Uh, it was just dropped to, this is the, what Dana just handed me, who just put it down to the 18,000, as Phil had requested.
And why does Phil feel that way? You didn't answer that, right? I almost paid attention, right?
That's the million-dollar question, because the chief and Phil at our last meeting told us that we actually needed more. And this is last.
Well, he probably, he may have a reason, so...
He maybe was looking at the 2020 more...
Say we leave it open for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. We should ask him about it then?
Yeah, yeah. You're making the note, right?
And that was, let's see, and has any thought been given about funding for the cement pad replacement? And...
And that is outside the, um, why is that, where is that on here?
Well, the public, is that the public safety building can be used?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
And so, the public safety building, um, capital reserve, we would have to check the warrant to make sure that it's for the grounds and, and not for only improvements or something of that nature.
So there's a balance in there of 48,000 right now, correct?
Yeah, right.
Which, that should more than cover a new concrete pad.
Well, they're not expecting to replace the concrete pad. They're expecting to rip up the, that whole section of the parking lot, redo the drainage, so there's not a problem underneath it like there has been. And then repave it and the, the other side. Basically do all of the repaving, and that would happen at the same time to save money as putting in the road up to the new salt shed location. So it would probably show up as one giant bill for paving from the paving company. We could, of course, apportion portions of it to different areas in our budgets, but, um...
Are we talking even the other side of the, of the, of the fire? So if I'm looking at the fire station, police station, we got the, the both doors. One's got the concrete pad out front, and the other side's just pavement, right?
Right, right.
So we're not doing that side. We're just talking this side.
The left side would be, which is the concrete pad side, would be redone.
Yeah.
And the other side would be, the expectation that was given to me was that that would get repaved.
Really?
So I don't know if it needs it or not. I haven't looked at it in detail, but...
I, I will say that you, to me, where the concrete pad is, and that definitely could cause havoc to this town. The other side, to me, you know, as some year, other year.
So...
As you're asking volunteers to watch their step.
Yeah, we're, we've been getting by, and they've been making it a lot better than it, uh, they thought it would be, so they've been able to make do with it, but, um, we, we will need to account for that, but the expectation is that it would happen at the same time as the installation of the salt shed road. However, we can't just immediately move forward with the salt shed road.
I have talked with Mrs. McAllen. She wants to check with her son. Her son would like us to submit to him a survey. And I've, and obviously it's winter, and I don't know if we want to have a survey for, for a sale that may not happen. However, I thought I would let it rest for a while and, uh, call them again this spring or a few months.
Yeah, they're not gonna do that in the winter time.
Yeah. Um, she wasn't very excited about it.
Because of the line issue?
Yeah, and because they just did it, you know?
Yep.
Basically, a year or two ago, I guess, last year.
And that doesn't agree with what we found out?
Well, it turns out when they went to put the driveway in, it would be more beneficial if they moved it over 40 feet or something like that.
The, the short version, uh, is that the, to do drainage and ditching, appropriately handle everything in best practices mode, uh, would put some of that over into the neighboring property. And none of the, that access way was not looked at, uh, for the purposes of the Salt Shed Committee purchasing land up behind for the salt shed location. It was, well, we have an access path. We're okay. Let's look at what's behind, rather than also considering the, the extra down the side. So that's where we are. We have the land to use. We, we can use it. We can get to it. But in order to build the access road in the best practices manner, uh, more land would be better, so that we don't have to either encroach upon or come really close to the...
I think that's a good, I mean, that's a good point, which I spoke to her about, but would drainage also be something that would be of interest? That we could do better drainage with that additional land?
That's, that's the purpose for it.
I didn't explain...
Or at least that's what, that's what was explained to me, was it was mainly for drainage. It wasn't that we're gonna build the road on the, on the new portion. The road that is basically there already. But if we were to pave it, having better drainage would, would be appropriate. I may be misunderstanding some of what I heard, but that's my, that's my current understanding.
And I think that's a good point to make. Um, and I, and I also think, and this has nothing to do with her, but, you know, it takes a while to get used to something sometimes, you know?
And things get lost in translation and, and the game of telephone, so...
Okay, so back to this.
Yeah. So, so we have what's sitting in front of us. That's those changes now, um, which helps our, our line a little bit from warrant articles. Um, most of it is pretty unchanged. Um, the fire department apparatus, uh, is up. That's to account for the, uh, fire engine purchase, basically. Um, and that fire engines and ambulances are more expensive now. Um, if you've read the, the CIP portions, there's some interesting bits there in that, um, you just changed something.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Uh, yeah, the safety building line. I don't know what was there.
No, I was down here. I was trying to see a formula.
Yeah, but when you, when you moved it, you typed something. Looks like a...
It's that little undo. That's what I do at work.
Yeah, undo a couple times. At least once. There we go.
That's it, okay.
Hands up.
So in the CIP, uh, they're, of course, wanting to have both the, uh, fire engine and the ambulance this year, and the funding for that would not be sitting in the capital reserve even funded at these rates. Um, what goes into here this year should make it possible to fully outright purchase the, uh, fire engine, but would not then give them additional for being able to get an ambulance. The CIP, of course, is, well, choose one or look at financing. I, I don't really like the concept of financing and additional charges on top of things, um, when we should be planning to do things appropriately instead, and that's why we have our funds. Um, so the expectation was that for around the 50,000, uh, a used ambulance would be able to be gotten. But that still wouldn't fit in the total fund balance along with the fire, uh, engine, which is expected to be between 460 and 5. Uh, so I'm concerned about that. Um, I think maybe even the 60,000 that is an increase in the fire department vehicles emergency apparatus might actually be a little bit too small for this year to make sure that we can fully outright pay for the fire engine. Um, and then if it were done at that level, when we could say, well, the 50,000, you would need to wait till next year to get the ambulance.
Well, that's what, that's what I was just gonna suggest.
One thing that's an opportunity on the board is there is a go-for-fund for replacing equipment that I've talked to him about. And if you purchase it this year, they might reimburse 90% of the cost.
That would be absolutely amazing.
That is only if you purchase it. We would have to purchase it this year.
Like, like with before, like, two days?
We would have to purchase it before, so it'd be like, give you that information, what's on the grant on it before.
You might want to check if they would, if that would be valid for like a used ambulance.
That's one of the things we also have to look into. I just sent this information.
But 90% of even a non-used one?
Well, I'm thinking, I was wondering if the grant, you know, was just a new piece.
Oh, it's only up to 50?
And if then we can get a used ambulance for $50,000, that would be...
How old is our ambulance?
How old is it?
I mean, compared to going and getting a new one, where are we? Cause, are you...
No, we were, I was just thinking of the joke, you know, Danny uses it so old that Danny Webster used to ride in it.
Uh, that's what they say about the ambulance?
No, I don't like this.
I don't know off the top of my head how old it is, but I think it's, it's probably...
It's in good shape, but it's older, so you can't necessarily expect...
I was gonna say, that's the problem with, you know, fire and trucks and all, they could be working great, but then, you know, laws don't want you to have the old things, and which is kind of drives you crazy.
Which the, yes, I totally understand every day how that all works, but then also sometimes the new stuff doesn't work any better. Especially with all the emissions stuff.
And, and the...
Been there, done that tons of times.
The old trucks used real, real, I, you know, steel and all, and so...
Wow, there's a lot to do with them.
So is this, uh, what did the CIP actually recommend for that line? Was it the 60,000?
I believe so. It's in, uh, the letter that, um, Greg wrote that showed you that.
But I'm, I guess we'll look into that more, but I'm, I'm more in agreeance with him that one, one step at a time, let's get the, you know, unless they come to us and they say that there's something, you know, how many miles does the ambulance have? What, what is, what is the biggest things that they might see that might go wrong with the ambulance? You know what I mean? Can it go another year?
And that's my looking at the 60, the 60 that, you know, is expected to go into it. We, we were basically told that 460, 465 was where the, the fire truck was definitely gonna come in. And so that puts us at zeroing or slightly overspending that line this year.
So we might have to take some from that.
So that's why I'm thinking that instead of the 60,000 that would be suggested by the CIP, maybe that should be 65,000. Worst case, it goes into the fund and we can use it for an ambulance later. Uh, but that way we can guarantee that we will actually have enough to pay for the, for the, the fire engine.
Okay. Fun, Amber.
Well, that makes sense.
No, I'm kidding with you. I mean, because you're just, I mean, the only other thing you could look at, too, is if for some reason, as you, you say, you like to budget and not be put onto what I call payments, in a sense, we are having to drop off the payment on the safety building.
Yeah, that would be next year.
Well, right, so if for some reason, so for example, let's say for some reason it's to get a used one, you're going backwards. Let's just say. That's where I would, would look into, like you just said, where it falls off. You know, is, is it, is it makes sense to spend some extra money now and put it in a, in a sense, then, you know, five years from now, because they've gone to from here to here, or, you know, those situations.
And the, so the, with the changes that we've made so far, the downside is the operating budget now goes up 0.08%. Um, based on the various changes that we made. Uh, the good news is that even with that increase, because of... Uh, the good news is that even with that increase, because of the, the other decreases and changes in the warrant articles, the those go down overall. So the total to be raised overall, both budget and warrant articles is down a half percent. We expect less revenues than, than previous, but we're, we're down a half percent on our, our budget and warrant articles, which is pretty darn amazing.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, no, yeah, no, I agree, I.
And then when, that should actually look really good the next year too, because the warrant article for the fire department vehicles and emergency apparatus should be able to go back to a normal amount. So that would save there, and of course then we would also not be having the public safety building bond.
Anymore.
So we would basically, the, the way that it is now, with that overall half percent decrease sets us up to get a sixteen grand decrease in two line items, sorry, three line items next year.
Yeah, so the likelihood unless something weird really happens.
Yeah, I mean, obviously other things will go up in costs.
Right.
Overall, the budget should actually go down again next year.
Yeah.
So.
And that's good.
Unless Dana wants, you know, a couple hundred thousands to stay. Yeah, yeah, not you two. Yeah, okay.
That's when we let them fight it out at the different states.
Yeah. No, no.
Um, so yeah, that's, uh, that's where that is. Was there anything you wanted to go over in the revenue?
Um, not particularly. The only, I mean, as I say all the time, revenue I expect that has been estimated quite lower than what we've actually.
We should get more money. Well, did you up the, did you up the, is the, is that line item for the meals and tax?
That was, that, I left the, I haven't changed anything and.
Cause that, I mean, that's not, we're not talking about all this.
The meals and tax went from the expected eighty thousand last year to the, basically what was previously expected, which was the ninety thousand.
Yeah, and now we're getting a hundred and forty.
So the question is, is that hundred forty gonna be?
Are you gonna get it next year?
Yeah, cause we got the hundred forty for this year, correct?
Oh, okay.
So basically we got an extra bonus like sixty grand.
So why can't we find that out?
Cause it's a surprise.
Well, no, because if, I just wish, you know, uh, you know, radio people too, and they talk so fast and you just, I, I heard it like eight times today, and it sounds like to me, there was, there was our representative that found that there was a misuse of the funds. It's what, that's what I, without saying that.
Well, I think that one reason why what they don't know is how much revenue they're gonna raise throughout the year.
With, with meals and tax?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I could, I could make a guess.
Yeah.
Because they're definitely.
They don't wanna commit with something they don't have.
No, no, I know, I agree. But you're already guessing on that number because it's historical.
That's all you can do, really?
Meaning, meaning it's.
I mean, you could raise, I, I mean, you would look, it's, it's kind of, the way I look at it, you could raise your revenue expectations and it would reflect well on your tax rate, but if you don't get it, it's not gonna help you.
Well, no, I, I, no, you, don't worry, I wasn't really going there.
Yeah, then the, then the second tax bill becomes the surprise.
Oh, no, please, no, 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 I mean, that's to me what, I mean, I'm just starting to even be part of this. That is something that happens way too often and where I pay bigger taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we would like to be in the, and, and we try to be, as you saw with even setting the tax rate.
Yeah.
We, we try to surprise people with a lower second half.
That's right, right, yeah. I guess I don't know that I ever totally understood how that second half even came about in a sense. But it's probably, yeah, your budget numbers.
Well, your first half is based on the previous year's rate.
That's right, that's right.
Uh, so I guess it's one half of the previous year's tax bill.
Yep.
And then of course, by the time your second half comes, you have a new rate. And the new rate times your assessment less what you've already paid.
That's right. Yes, got it. No, I mean, I, I get it, but I mean, I just guess I hadn't picked up much thought to it. You just get mad more than anything, what?
It's just funny because of the weird timing of everything.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and when everybody's fiscal years line up is not the same.
That's right, that's the big thing.
Are you ready for Monday with the operating and?
I think we are, cause I, I think we've got everything uh pretty much set, except for the couple of questions that we learned and that we wanted to ask, so.
I think what I'll do, I have this letter that I'm gonna send to you with your packet.
Okay.
That, and I'd like to have a non-public on Monday to talk about it. It's under personnel. I also have, um, I wanna.
If it's personnel, should we just do it now?
Um, well, you haven't had a chance to read the letter.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, I, I mean, what do you think? I can, I can, I could read it now.
That's what it is. That'd be non-public.
If you want, I mean, I, we can do it now if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm kinda with you.
I like these afternoon meetings to take.
Well, I'm just thinking, we got a lot to do on Monday and that, let's, then we may, we may even think about this.
Yeah, if we're gonna, if we're gonna ask them about stuff, then.
Yes, so let's, let's.
So when you're ready to?
Right, uh, so is there anything further on the budget at this point?
No, I think we've, I think we've gone through with a, a little bit of a column.
I'm going to check for you on the office supplies and the finance, in the financial administration.
Okay.
Uh, the legal line regarding the solar project, how that affects that. I'm going to confirm the retirement and do the comparison for the electricity.
Okay.
I'm gonna ask the conservation commission to come in on Monday if they can.
Or write something.
Yeah.
Or, or give you something.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And if not, for the next meeting, which is after their meeting.
Okay. And even discuss.
And specifically also be requesting that we would like, or I, I guess I thought we had consensus, but let me double check that uh we wanted to see the trail maps happen this year. Yeah.
Well, if we're gonna keep, if we're gonna keep.
I'd be nice, yes.
So we would, we would like to see that and know how much they expect that would happen, right?
Phil gave me, um.
Now, is this on non-public?
No.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say.
Phil gave me an updated, um suggestion for the police cruiser. At first, the first one he gave was forty-three thousand. And there wasn't sufficient funds in the capital reserve fund to cover this, which is why we need to appropriate some of it if the board decides to go through with it. They've lowered it to thirty-seven thousand because they plan to use some money out of the, the special detail fund. So this is another proposed warrant article. In addition to the warrant articles for the capital reserve fund and the.
That means.
Okay, so this, so there, that makes some sense then as to why they would want to drop the amount in the capital reserve.
Yes, that's, cause that's what you were just asking.
Because they're not expecting to, they're basically getting this without having to tap the normal amount if this passes.
Yes, so this goes in front of the town as a warrant article.
Yes.
So we, we're, all we're gonna agree to, if we, if we all agree.
Oh, no, it says with thirty-seven thousand to come from a police cruiser capital reserve fund, and it doesn't have that much in it.
This is a special warrant article?
Yeah, that, well, that's the normal wording.
Oh, did he say for, it was gonna come?
But it, he's saying that it's to come out of the police cruiser capital reserve fund, which at least from what's here, is not showing that it would have enough money.
So we need to ask him why he says?
So we should make sure that
Well, that warrant, if in that, I mean.
Balances are correct.
I don't think you really can do the net amount. I think you need to appropriate the whole thing, even though part of it's coming out of the detail. I mean, you can do that. The what was it, ninety-four hundred, and then he's putting in eighteen, wanting to use that immediately. Which is kinda scratchy in my opinion. You might as well just raise the money and buy it.
It's scratchy, that's a, I've never got to use that.
I mean, you know, you put money in your savings account and then the next day you're there to take it out, so what good did it do you?
Yeah.
I, I would be more inclined to, if we're going to do it for a police cruiser this year, uh, I would be more inclined to zero the line in the capital reserve fund and make it only this warrant article. And make that not coming from the capital reserve fund.
Does that put you, I mean, we're trying to get back on schedule with saving for the car, and they said as we speak today, that they weren't gonna have a car next year, but they would the following year.
Well, this is saying, this is saying that they're gonna have a car this coming year.
Well, that's what that's saying, but you're the body that puts the warrant articles on. I'm just saying that if you zero the capital reserve deposit, you're, you're not gonna have enough in two years when you wanna buy a car again.
In two years?
Well, he said, he told you that he.
They're expecting that it would get zeroed out by use, by doing this.
And that's, that's how I take it.
And we actually would not be zeroed out. We'd have, still have the nine thousand.
Five hundred.
Four, five hundred roughly, uh, if this were to be completely appropriated through taxes.
And then next year you'd buy a car and you put in, say, twenty thousand dollars, you might have almost enough.
Well, it was set at twenty-one, but if we put in the twenty-one, and then the year after it gets the tw- and then the year after it gets the twenty-one, now you've got, you know, fifty grand plus sitting there, and that better be enough.
Okay.
All right, so.
I'm just wanting to make sure that down the road, if they don't.
I thought if they got the new cruiser, they were gonna need one for a while.
I thought they said one, they were.
And then last, last week, your chief said, well, we've got one, then, like, it's not gonna last this year because of the.
Oh, but I was thinking, that's what they were talking about.
I thought they told you last time that
Yeah.
this year they wanted one, but next year they weren't gonna buy it.
And then next year, they're not gonna ask or anything, right?
Or they anticipate they don't have to ask.
Because the.
And so that would be this.
Can I see that?
But it wouldn't actually come out of the capital reserve fund, cause the, unless the balance that I have of ninety-four fifty-nine is somehow is old and is missing the deposit from this year.
No, I think that was the one that's accurate because it refunded it earlier.
Cause we would take, we funded it early and then took it out for.
I, I'll check up there, you know, it's.
Oh, but that was, that was the one where they were saying maybe we shouldn't have done it that way, so do we have to reimburse the fund?
No, and I've talked to Ray about that.
Okay.
You were the agents to a spend, expend.
Are, are we actually? Cause they said that we weren't.
Well, the trustees think you are, however, when I looked at the, when it was, this was set up in, in eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three, it's not specified, and I don't know if that means that, um, if it's not specified, then it's the town that decides. But for quite some time, the select boards would make decisions on that. Uh, I think we, that was the other thing I was gonna talk to you about. I think we should do a corrective.
Well, our select board actually has not been doing that. It's been going to town budgets via.
Oh, good, okay.
Style.
Perfect, okay.
Which it probably needs to stay doing that.
Yeah, so, so I don't think we actually are the agents to expend.
Okay, well, it didn't specify in the warrant article back in nineteen eighty-three, um, so.
I think I got what you're saying.
Yeah. Okay, I'll be quiet now.
All right, moving on.
So I think, I think we're probably okay there then. Um, we'll have to figure out how that funding works and the best way to uh, maybe the best way to do it is to leave this, the, the, the capital reserve fund at the expected amount, which is the eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, whichever we decide on. And then write the warrant article to the special warrant article to appropriate an additional amount and use the capital reserve fund. If, and that way people can see, well, this is an additional amount, but this is the plan. That might be the logical way to do it, cause then this is gonna be needed one way or another. Town, do you support them getting it now? Which is kinda typically the town going, yes or no, you can have it now, so.
Cause right now you got, you got three altogether. Two are, two are new, in a sense, very new.
Yeah.
And the third one's the one with a hundred and something miles on it, and I was in the full, full understanding that they were trying to get one more. But, but I may just be confused my ears.
They're trying to replace the, the, the old one.
No, I understood that, yes. And then they tried to say, well, if we do that, we'll have three with very little mileage on it them, and so they should be able to like skip a year
Right.
or something like that, but I.
Skip the next year. That's what he said.
I think we'll have to work on the wording on that. Because.
The, the other thing is in the past, when we've done this, there's also been an expected value of trade-in uh, that was included as a reduction.
Right, so I think there's a few pieces we're missing.
I don't think you're gonna get much for that.
Well, probably not, but in the past, it was like a couple grand.
I take it back because now everybody's going crazy over vehicles and stuff, so I bet we could get a lot of money on that. I mean, more money than we normally would get because.
I'll, I'll agree with more than we would normally.
Yeah, right, yeah, right, yeah, but because everybody, that's all they're looking for is.
So
Okay.
I think all of those pieces need to be there before we look at that and how to break that.
But in the end, the, the town will be the ones that, we would just write it, but they'd be the ones to decide.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a good thing.
That's a very good thing.
And the other one.
It's the, it's the, it's the part of how much is going to come out of the funds and how much is, I think the whole amount needs to be appropriated and then offset by the, whatever's in the account to offset it.
Um, and the second one that we know of for, um, obviously we'll have the Pillsbury Lake.
The ten thousand.
Ten thousand bond when we normally write that uh warrant article and it'll be a copy paste. The other one that we have is the request from the historic society.
For the five thousand.
For the roughly five thousand and
That would be like seven, like this.
I think the most sensible way to do it is to have a warrant article like this. In the past, they've written it as a warrant article for us to present to the town, and then they've come and talked about it. Uh, their request was to either A, include it in the budget, which we decided not to do, or to have us write the warrant article. I, I don't know whether it matters whether we write it or they do, or whether for the optics of the this is the historic society and they're not the town, they should be writing it and ask for it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's a big part of our town. I, I would hate to think that, you know, we, we I, I gotta say, budgeted money to this committee and didn't give anything, though they're not a committee, I get it, but, you know.
Yeah.
If you write the warrant article, um, whatever it might say, the, that would come from the select board in that case, and there'd be a vote on it, that, that you, you would have voted, you know, two for, one against, or something like that, and then someone needs to speak from it, from the board when it comes up on the floor. If they do a petition and present it, then they need to speak
Correct.
And, and probably you can give the floor to them, um, but I'm just trying to make it
Yeah, that's why I think it might be more appropriate for them to be able to just speak about their article.
Absolutely, I think so too.
Absolutely, yeah.
So in that case, they'd probably have to do a petition.
Yeah.
They're not in the budget now at all, right?
No.
And does that, correct me here, but, and this is one of the things that I don't want to burden them with if it's true. Do, do they require a certain number of signatures for a warrant?
Twenty-five, petition, twenty-five.
That's nothing, twenty-five aside.
Especially compared to their memberships, so.
Yeah.
Oh, you, you wouldn't have, I don't believe.
And they have to be registered voters.
Is it weird not to have your, is, is that not very, fairly normal? To have the historic citing not in your budget?
No, it's normal.
For towns? Very, okay.
Yeah, usually that's a separate entity.
You just would hate to see.
Cause it's a separate entity, that's, that's the thing.
So that way they can take a bunch of donations and everything else.
Yes, yes, and we're not in track, yeah, I get it, I get it.
All right.
They're just more or less asking for money from all the townspeople as a donation in a sense. They're just more or less asking for money from all the townspeople as a donation, in a sense, when they ask for the five thousand. Would that, would that be each year?
The warrant, the warrant article would be for a given year.
Uh-huh.
If it were written to do this and add it to the budget, or if we had added it as a budget line item, then it would in theory be each year.
Okay, right.
I think the warrant article makes the most sense, um, like with the Pillsbury Lake Dam Bond, I, it just makes sense to be sitting there and something that the town goes, oh yeah, we've got that, that's cool, we, we need to remember about it, and and it gives them an opportunity to tell the entire town that they did that year too.
Good. Oh, oh, I have one question. Have we ever heard anything from B, from the close bid bridge people? Have we had anything about that? We have nice big holes in the bridge now, I mean, I stopped my car and I could, it was a rebar and I could see down.
Did you see the best job?
Yeah, I could, if I was looking.
Yeah, Roy mentioned that to me today, and I talked to Ammon about it, he says he, he's aware of it.
So what's he gonna, put some patch in it?
But it's, it's very hard, you know, they patch it and the next day it's, all the stuff is gone.
Oh, yes, and it's, it's down in the river.
Yeah, exactly.
And so I, that's what I said, the only way they're gonna patch it is put a metal piece or something.
Now, VHB, I do hear from them, you, you approve a bill every month practically for VHB, because they're paying.
Yeah, right, but what are we hearing?
Um, the last I knew that, and I, I know I told Dave, but maybe I didn't tell the whole board, was that this, originally, there was gonna be a wider bridge to accommodate fishermen.
And now that's taken, taken away, right?
And, and it was taken away, and now it might be bad.
Oh, and why? Do we know?
Because someone of importance, this is how it was worded to me, someone of importance spoke to somebody.
Yes, yes.
Was that you?
I don't know. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I thought you'd be familiar with it.
Yeah, yeah, it's coming back to me, yeah.
Well, it is, I mean, it is, so many people are on that bridge, I'm telling you, you know, and it's skinny.
Well, the only thing, I mean, the only thing that I worry about is that it will hold up the project.
More.
Well, it could help.
But it is a, it is a-
But it would be, I suppose, in the long run.
We talk about trails and all that kinda stuff.
Yeah, right, exactly, no, exactly, you miss day and age.
Well, I think that's why you wanna leave the holes in the bridge too, because you could just jump on the bridge.
You could put, you could put your line through there.
Yeah, through to the ice fishing.
Okay, so, alright, so that was just thank you, I just-
I also have one more, I'm sorry to keep bringing up, one more thing, one more thing. Um, Dave, I've been talking to you about the bill for the paving.
Yes.
Out here?
Yeah, I need to figure out how we're gonna pay for that. Um, did you say that we could not use the, um, the fund that we have for emergencies, the contingency fund?
Well, originally, we had decided that we didn't want to use that, and we have made this decision to go forward based on being able, the expectation of being able to use ARPA funds.
Okay.
Which it sounds like you've been told-
And we've found out since that we can't use ARPA funds, which is unfortunate.
Yes.
Um.
And, and why?
We have, because it's, they have changed some of the criteria, and it's ba-
Are we showing off in them?
But however, other towns are doing a lot, and I, but I just don't wanna get to be twenty twenty-four and then say you owe us this money back.
But then they'd have to go back and get it from a lot of people.
Exactly, and so you, you wonder, so I guess I'm, I'm saying to the board, we have, we have eighteen in the capital reserve fund. That would, we have to leave five hundred in the fund to keep it open, but, so we have, we're short ten. We have probably five in the impact fees. Which brings us to twenty-three, so we're short about five. And if we could use the contingency fund, um-
I, I would suggest that since we are at the end of the year, and we don't have other contingencies for the contingency fund, that this seems like a fairly reasonable emergency contingency, because it's not what we had planned.
No, no, I mean, because we, in, in good faith, we thought the ARPA money would take care of it.
Right.
You know?
And while we could over, overdraw some other budget line item, I don't think there's any reason to do so.
I don't like it either, because it doesn't look good.
No, I think, I mean, we only have a couple more days to the year to use the contingency, we've gotten-
And, and we basically haven't used it. I don't think we've touched it at all this year.
Not this year, no.
Last, last year, we used almost all of it, but, uh, this, let's see.
Sixteen, two thirty-four.
Yeah, so it was six, a little over sixteen grand, wasn't it?
So if you feel like you got all the money, then it's not really affecting anything in the sense-
Well, I think that, you know, the contingency fund, um, is really just money that is reserved out of the fund balance.
Fund.
And, um-
So doesn't, it's not costing taxpayers any more money technically?
They're, they're paid for it, but it, not additional money.
Yeah, previously taxed money.
The impact fees would come out of several accounts, and it's an accounting nightmare. Um, and all these little accounts have like three hundred dollars that belong to them.
So would you rather just use the current?
However, knowing that if we don't spend the impact fees, we have to give them back.
Right, we don't wanna give them back.
Um, I would suggest that we, because this is definitely something that impact fees would be qualifying for, I would suggest that we drain all the impact fees, and then the-
You asked.
Use the, uh, use the contingency fund, and then put the remaining amount into the, uh, trust fund.
Okay.
Or from the trust fund.
Okay.
How come there's so many accounts with this impact fee?
The impact fee, there's a separate account for any time someone builds a house.
The account that has to be set in a new house, when you build a new house.
Oh, because it has to go back if you don't use it.
Right, it goes back to the person if we don't, we're not in danger of losing, of sending any of it back now, because we just used some for the, some work that was done here.
And this looks great, the, boy, I love that tar is so, it's such, it looks so good.
What are you talking about? We still have the dirt drive, I haven't seen it recently.
Oh, it didn't wash out?
Oh, no, just with all the, the, uh-
Oh, sand, yeah, sanding, right, right.
So for Monday, I will have what those amounts are.
Sounds good.
Monday, that's next year.
I know, yeah, I'll bring it back to you next year.
Okay, I'm fine.
That's kinda how the speed I go anyway.
Well, that'd be for, see you next year. Alright.
Alright, so are we good with all of that?
Thank you, I'm just sorry to keep asking you questions.
Okay, so, uh, would this be personnel?
It would be.
Alright, I would move that we enter into non-public at five twenty-six under personnel.
Second.